We will now reconvene the November 7th, 2023, 2:00 p.m. meeting to order at 3:12 p.m. With no further business, we will adjourn that meeting at 3:12 p.m. And now we will call the meeting of the Waco City Council on November 7th, 2023, to order at 3:12 p.m. Started running a couple of minutes late. And before we have a moment of silence, I do want to make an acknowledgement. We have our Chief Victorian, who was awarded the Athena Award just a couple hours ago. Standing Award for a leader in our community and very proud that someone from our team who did, who won that. And even though they were really, really great nominees, I was not surprised. I knew the whole time that our chief was going to bring that award home. So congratulations, Chief. So with that, if you would, join me for a moment of silence. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the portion of the hearing, or during the hearing of visitors' portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak, if not, without a registration card, please see the city secretary's staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation, and staff will distribute those to council. And if we're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. And we do have one card, and that is Dr. Northcutt regarding IR 907. Dr. Northcutt.
Alan Northcutt, no handout today. As a driver of EVs for almost seven years now and a citizen of Waco, I'm very pleased to see the city moving forward on EV chargers. We've been pushing for this since about 2018. I just had a couple of comments to make on this item. First, in the, in the protocol, I don't see any specification whether these are Level 2 or Level 3 chargers. That makes a huge difference. Level 2 adds about 20 miles per hour of charging. A Level 3 charger, you can charge most EVs in 30 minutes or so. So it doesn't really specify which it is, and that matters. Second, I think the goal of these is, I guess, to make charging more convenient for tourists especially, and visitors to the city, given some of the locations that are specified. But the other thing is to increase the adoption of EVs to help combat the climate crisis, and that's a very important part of it. Most people that have garages charge there, as you know, they don't need any outside charger. But folks that live in apartments or housing complex or whatever may not have a garage and may not be able to charge. And I think charger location for them could be addressed. The places that people park most of the time are at home and at their place of work. Now, if any of these chargers from these grants can be located in housing complexes that have parking lots or at major employers, I don't know if this can be worked out in the terms of this, this grant, but if it can, that would be the greatest bang for the buck, where the people live and where they work. You would reach a lot more people than libraries and, you know, community centers, which are great, but they wouldn't reach as many people. And finally, the charging plug right now is going under a transition to the Tesla charger, and it's going to be termed the North America Charging Standard. So we need to question these charger companies, what they, how they plan to deal with this. So the CCS is going to go away, and it's going to be replaced with a Tesla plug. So there'll be an adapter at first, and then these various car manufacturers are going to have basically Tesla plugs before very long. So they need to have a plan for how they're going to deal with that change as the Tesla plug becomes the standard in North America at least. So that's what I need to say about this. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Northcutt. Is there anyone else here to speak on any agenda item or work session? If not, then we will recess the regular session and reconvene to work session with a report from our city manager.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, community. We have no changes on the agenda today that we presented. I do have several employee recognition items. Mayor may have stolen one of them. That's okay.
After I did it, I thought, man, I bet I just stole some thunder.
We've got a picture, though, so.
Okay.
We'll run back through it. But our first one, though, we wanted to highlight employee recognition. We do this every year, and it's our veteran recognition. Veterans Day, of course, coming up Saturday with the parade, but I always like to spend, and this is what prior city managers have done as well, a moment thanking our city staff that are veterans. Many folks just don't realize we have more than 160 veterans on staff. Just about 10% of our working population has served our country and is now serving Waco. And so I'm just really pleased that a few of those staff members are in the audience today, and I'd like to ask them to stand as they're able so we could recognize you, if you're a veteran.
None of us are actually veterans. I sincerely want to thank you for your service to our country and the freedoms that we enjoy. It is not something that any of us take lightly, and I'm, I'm really thankful that Waco is a city where the people, I believe, really try to honor our veterans for their sacrifice, for their family's sacrifice, and have a deep sense of gratitude for all that veterans have done for our country. And Waco is a better city, and America is a stronger democracy because of your sacrifice. So thank you.
Mayor, I'll just chime in as the son of veterans, grateful for all of our city staff who have served in the armed forces, for the sacrifices that you've made for our country, and now that those that you're making in service to our city. So a hearty thanks to all of you for what you've done. Also, I want to give a big shout out to our staff that has helped launch the Veterans' Advisory Board and the citizens serving on the Veterans Advisory Board under Bradley Ford and with the assistance of the city attorney's office. We are now, have a more coherent approach to veterans' policy, thanks to that visionary leadership and the leadership of this mayor and this council. So grateful for all who have served.
For anybody in the audience wondering, most of that was the work of Councilmember Borderwood. But he's very gracious and very much appreciate his love for veterans.
Hundred percent. Thank you, Josh, for all your work on that.
Our, our next employee recognition, if somebody doesn't love the spotlight, we're going to give it to her anyway. And it's a congratulations, actually, to our city secretary, Michelle Hicks, who recently, we found out, was nominated for Municipal Clerk of the Year for the whole state of Texas. You know, municipal clerks, they, they manage voting and important things, records and various things. So I'm, I'm going Chicago-style. I'm going to be voting a lot of times for Michelle. I don't know if they'll, they'll receive my vote that many times, but I'm going to try and make this happen.
I had council members and mayors from all over the state of Texas reaching out to me. They were like, hey, I saw your city secretary was nominated for Texas. I said, of course she was.
But Michelle represents this council and this community very well, and we're very proud of you. All right. My third employee recognition item was, of course, I think Gus has some music we're going to cue up for Chief Victorian. No, I'm kidding. We're not going to play the music. But it just at lunch, as the mayor said, there's, yeah, there's the image. Real proud of Chief Victorian for the recognition she received. She was one of four finalists in the community, each one with great stories of leadership and mentorship for women, but certainly proud that she was given that award. She's very worthy of that award, and we, we've actually had nominees two years in a row now, which our own deputy city manager was nominated the last year. So it's just really nice to see leadership in Waco, particularly in this, in this way, women leading well, coming out of our organization. Really nice to see that recognition. So Chief, congrats again, and thanks for all that you do. And lastly, oh, you're right. Lastly, we have had previous presentations on branding and marketing, and we've actually got a new marketing video we're going to show in a minute in the spirit of just saying thanks to our communications team that's been really working hard on the branding initiative. I know we've got several team members in the audience, so if you don't mind waving so we can recognize your work. Yeah, y'all wave. Yeah, thank you. They've been working on this branding campaign, and it's much more than just a logo. It's much more about telling our story and who we are, and so that comms team has done tremendous work. What you're going to see here is kind of a video representation of our brand, and with the voice of Waco, two particular voices of Waco, we're going to show these brief, minute-long videos. So roll the video, please.
Our story has long been told by outsiders. Outsiders who have defined this place by one moment in time, one group, one individual, or one perspective. But no place is just one thing. Waco is so much more. It's time for Waco to tell its story. We are defined by the communities that come together to bring our city to life. It's time for the people who have built and continue to nurture this place to come together to define its future. Our founders and farmers, our workers and makers, our artists and athletes, our helpers and healers, our educators and allies, our families and our future. The voice of our city. That dares you to define Waco by just one thing. Waco, a city to believe in.
I couldn't tell y'all, can't say how thankful I think we all are for, for where we are on this project and where we are, so.
And Councilmember Borderwood knocked that out in one take.
Yeah.
One take. It took him 30 seconds. He got in and out.
Well, I think there's a version with Councilmember Bearfield as, as a narrator that I'm told is even better.
Well, we're about to, we let Josh back, open up, he was leadoff.
It's a vote. We're going to show hands after this. Everyone, prepare to vote. It's election day, people, and you're about to cast a ballot.
Bringing in the cleanup hitter now. Let's hear the second, second version, Gus.
Our story has long been told by outsiders. Outsiders who have defined this place by one moment in time, one group, one individual, or one perspective. But no place is just one thing. Waco is so much more. It's time for Waco to tell its story. We are defined by the communities that come together to bring our city to life. It's time for the people who have built and continue to nurture this place to come together to define its future. Our founders and farmers, our workers and makers, our artists and athletes, our helpers and healers, our educators and allies, our families and our future. The voice of our city. That dares you to define Waco by just one thing. Waco, a city to believe in.
That's two great narrators. Very thankful that my voice is not narrating that, because it would have been really bad. But great job to council members and incredible job to our comms team and our staff. And thanks to Bradley and his team for really getting behind us doing this exercise. This is something our council has really desired for a while, and I think that it's going to be really meaningful to carry this in the years ahead.
You're the only one that honks at the digital billboard sign on I-35. Is it just me?
It's looking good. We have a new billboard up.
Love it. Love it.
Yep. Well done. Thank you, Gus.
Very good. Thank you. I saw my first one on Highway 84 yesterday morning. Love it.
Love it.
All right. Today, we've got three informal reports. They are each in their own, quite a bit to chew on. We heard a speaker on the first one, IR 907, which provided the update on our EV charging stations, RFP, and our grant applications. And IR 908 provides an update on mowing and ground maintenance and a new approach we're taking for that. And lastly, IR 909 provided the first version of our quarterly report on plating activity in the community of Waco. Like I said, this is our first run at that report. It was council requested, Councilmember Holmes, I believe, and we're already thinking on some ways to improve upon it, but always open to hearing your feedback. If you're looking for something different, just shoot me an email, and we'll get it incorporated into that report.
I've just got a couple of brief comments on two of the informal reports. First of all, and Dr. Northcutt hit on some of this stuff, too. I like that we're being very proactive and thoughtful about where these charging locations are going to be located. And I like the fact that we're using federal grants to implement this, this deal. So it's two different federal grants, CFI and NEVI, and the fact that we can use federal money to facilitate something we're trying to get done in Waco, I think is great. But, and Dr. Northcutt did bring up a good point about making sure that we're using the latest technology. Technology moves so quickly on this. I don't want it to be, we don't want it to be obsolete before we even put it in, so that was a good point, actually. The 909, the quarterly plating report, great. Clint, thanks for pulling that together. And I've got a couple of things I'm going to follow up with you on, but it's an easy way for us to keep track of where the plating is, where the growth has taken place, where we need to be thinking about infrastructure, and this ripple effect on that report that is material. So thanks for pulling that together.
Sure. In response to the question that was raised earlier, I do have some, some commentary from staff. Certainly on the, on the charging plug, great point, and we'll, we'll be responsive to that point, given there's now a standard. That's good. And then on the level of charging, it'll be a mix of Level 2 and 3. The reason being is a lot of coordination with Encore on power supply.
I was going to ask if that was a factor in that, because I know we've had that conversation, well, I've had that conversation with some of the Encore team before. I guess I would, I would assume that areas that are higher traffic should have the higher voltage, and I don't know how we figured out what that is, but that would make more sense, because what you don't want is a high-traffic area with a slow charger, because that means that people are there for a lengthy amount of time. So, I mean, I know it's, we got to do some tweaking, so let's just get that part figured out.
Yep, exactly. Well, we'll provide some more updates as we get closer to installation, and I think there's some creative things we can do to market the sites that end up with better charging situations, getting folks there. So we'll be glad to provide a further update in the future on that. We do have eight public hearings on the agenda today. Galen Price will present the first one during the business session, and then Clint Peters will be here later in the work session to provide an overview on a couple of those public hearings, or take any questions that you have on the remaining of the public hearings. We have 36 resolutions today. Wanted to highlight just a couple of them. The first set is Resolutions 940 and 941. Both are resolutions supporting the new Fire Station 15 on Panther Way. We're, we're moving into the construction phase of that project. The new fire station, of course, will be about 8,000 square feet with three apparatus bays and accommodations for up to eight fire personnel per shift, which we're planning for the future there in terms of its construction. Seeing updated rendering here, there's a water tower right behind it that I guess we didn't render. It casts a nice shadow, doesn't it, Charles? Yeah. But we're looking forward to groundbreaking activity next month. Of course, the council will be invited to that. And then, of course, there's the two resolutions, the first one being for communication, security systems, cabling and devices. The first resolution, that's with Neimer Electric. And then the second resolution being the construction contract with John Irwin, who will be our general contractor on this project. Both local firms, and looking forward to having them execute on this project.
Mayor Ford, I want to commend city staff for their good work in the bidding on these, and this is such a win for the community, not only local contracts, but reduced fire response time out in arguably the highest-growth area of the county here along Ritchie Road. So excited about a stepped-up Waco Fire Department presence there, permanent presence that will, will assist our neighbors in need when they have an emergency or, God forbid, a fire. Yeah, thank you.
And may I add a little bit to that? The baseball teams at the Carter Palace fields, the other day, there was a fire on the creek by 11th Street, and they called it in. And, and they said they had just hung up the phone when they heard the sirens of the fire trucks coming. It was an electrical fire. I think one of the lines fell down and hit one of the trees and started a fire there, and the coaches called it in. But they asked me to thank the fire department for reacting as fast as they did, because it would have been a bad, bad situation, because it was by the restaurant, and the restaurant didn't even know. They didn't come out till after the firefighters left. But the coaches and ballplayers all wanted for me to tell the firefighters, thank you for coming as quickly as you did. They were so impressed by how fast they got there. So thank you, firefighters.
Yep. This definitely, this agenda item definitely shows a commitment to fire safety in our community. Thank you for that testimony of just that, council member.
Yeah, this council's been very supportive of fire service, and they're living up to the, living up to the demands. The next resolution I want to highlight is also a fire item that will help us get, get to fires effectively and quickly, and that's Resolution 952, which is the purchase of a new ladder truck, as well as a custom hazmat truck for the fire department through a cooperative purchasing agreement in an amount not to exceed $3.78 million. This purchase is part of our ongoing transition for the Waco Fire Fleet that started in 2021. Council, recall, we purchased seven new fire trucks in 2021, placed them into service in 2022. We bought three more in 2022. That'll be delivered early in '24. And then, of course, these new vehicles shown on the screen will be purchased on this agenda, replace a 2012 truck, move it into reserve status, as well as replace a 2006 hazmat truck that, it has a hazmat truck and a trailer. The truck shown on the top left here will be a substantial upgrade from what our current service levels are. So definitely appreciate the support on both of these apparatus. We will not be using a white and blue color scheme, so don't worry about that. But excited to bring both those to you as well. And lastly, I wanted to say there's eight ordinances on the agenda today, one of which is First Reading, and that's Ordinance 964, which considers a revision to the Code of Ordinances Regarding Texas Municipal Retirement System Benefits, TMRS for short. This ordinance addresses our efforts that the council let out on in this past budget cycle to adopt a cost-of-living adjustment for our retirees, which Missy's going to kill me, because I don't remember the exact number of years it's been, but it's been over a decade. What is it, Missy? How long?
2014.
2014. So right at 10 years since our last COLA adjustment for our retirees. And this is an item that took a little bit of fortitude on the council's behalf, and I think we struck the right balance of meeting the expectations of the taxpayers while also serving our retirees well. Mayor and council, that concludes my report for today, and I'll take any questions that you have for me.
Any questions, Bradley?
Excuse me. Bradley, I just wanted to say about the Foscar House, there's a resolution here, our ordinance up, and I just wanted to say that that house, the name of the family was my principal at Sol Ross Elementary, and I went to that house a couple of times, because back in the day, our principals and our teachers would take us to their homes if we had special projects. So I got to go in that Foscar House. So just a little note of history there, that I hope that whatever it is that we're doing to this, that house is a historic house, and I hope that whatever we're passing doesn't do anything to harm that house in any way, form, or fashion.
What's the address of that?
North Fifth, North Fourth Street.
I think the intention is, is to preserve it.
Well, there's a. It's a law firm that's wanting to rezone it to '03. Or was that last, last missed meeting? That's the last meeting that I missed?
'03? Somebody, somebody tracked that with me. Is that right?
Yep.
'03. I have Clint, if he's got any details, he can share them in the work session here in a few minutes. I don't, you know, in those zoning cases, sometimes we know what's going on, and sometimes we don't. So we'll, we'll put him on the spot here in a few minutes.
THC is involved, so I think there's a level of historic preservation that has to be adhered to.
Yeah, well, it is a historic home, but I just want to make sure that what we're passing does not affect that house in any way, form, or fashion, because it is one of our historic homes around the city. We don't have very many of them left, so I want to make sure we don't harm this one in any way.
Any other questions? The consent agenda includes Resolutions 2023, 928 through 963. Are there any items council would like to remove from the consent agenda? All right, the consent agenda includes Resolutions 2023, 928 through 963, except for 930, 933, and 935, because Councilmember Borderwood has filed an affidavit of substantial interest for each of those items. The next item on the work session is Items 2023, 910 through 914. Bradley, would you please introduce the first work session?
Mayor, our first work session is 910. Welcome Robert Myers and Rick Bostick to the table up front. There they are. This is part of the legal team that works to collect delinquent tax accounts on behalf of the city of Waco, and we try to have them come in once a year and brief the council on their activities, as well as the public on their activities, because it's an important work. We want to turn it over to the team now.
Thank you, members, Mayor Meek, members of the council. I'm Robert Myers. I'm an attorney with the McCray Law Firm. Good to see you again on our annual visit. We'd like to go through a short presentation of the status of your delinquent tax accounts and other accounts that we also represent, the city and assist in collecting. And I'll let Rick start off with, with our presentation, and we'll try to get through there quickly. I know you have a lengthy agenda, and so we'll make our statements quick and short, despite being attorneys.
We're not paying for this afternoon, so it takes much time.
We don't pay them by, we don't pay them by hour. We don't.
Before we get started, we usually say something about not only our job for the city being a privilege and an honor, but as well about how we try, our two firms, to manage this business. to manage this business of tax collection for the city. It's obviously vital to the city. It's a, as you can see, it's a strong source of income year to year. In the first chart, in the booklet we provided, you can see that you collect an extraordinary amount of the levy to begin with before it's ever turned over. I mean, you collect almost ninety-nine percent of the taxes.
I think that mouse, we need that presentation, if you want to go to the mouse. Let me try to move this. There we go.
Yeah. Which is a, and you do that year to year. So that's a statement about the relative strength of the local business community and the strength of your constituents and their capacity and desire to pay the taxes that are levied. And I mean, that's when it's almost ninety-nine percent every year, that's pretty remarkable.
If I just may add a little bit here that this is your annual collection rate for the last five years. And over this period of time, the city has grown exponentially, at least from all those of us in the work that we do. And what I mean by that is that the city's taxable value over this period of time has increased from approximately ten billion dollars to fifteen billion dollars, almost a one-third increase over the same period of time. And still, as Rick was pointing out, your property owners, residential property owners, business property owners are still able to maintain this high level of collection of those taxes on the additional values and accounts that there are in the City of Waco. And I think it just goes to emphasize the proof of the nature of the growth that the City of Waco is receiving over the past few years.
And if we could turn to the next chart. This indicates, obviously, that you collect in almost every year, 2019 and 2018 being exceptions, and still you collected ninety, over ninety-nine percent. I won't go into the details of those past years that's in the handout. But almost every year, the city ultimately collects more than its levy and did as well again this year. It's at a hundred point two-three percent. That, the significance of that is, is that it is a stable source of income year to year for the city. Some sources of income are not so stable, but you can look at your history and see that for the last three years and two anomalies, but for the last three years, you've collected more than you levy ultimately. And having said that, I want to deviate just for a minute. And I want, and we've said this before, but I want to reiterate it because we take it very seriously. We strive, our two firms, to collect all and most, or all plus, of the city levy. But there's another side to that. And we realize that these collections are coming from our neighbors, Robert and my neighbors, your neighbors, your constituents, and the businesses that operate here. And that is-
That's not a comment.
Because this is coming out of hard-earned money that each of these entities and people have earned. And for some, in some years, it's just an impossible task. And we understand that. And we understand these are our neighbors. They're the people across the street or down a block. And in almost every case, it's not because they choose not to be able to pay, it's just they've had bad circumstances, an illness or whatever comes up in life. And we try to understand that and work with them as to the absolute extent that we possibly can. Because that's how we understand you want us to go about your business. And I just want you to understand, we take that very seriously. Finally, if we can get to the last chart. Did I skip one?
No, this was it.
Yeah. You'll see, this chart is indicative of, over time, I mean, all of these taxes, delinquent taxes, don't get collected in the first few months. And the longer that our respective firms have to work on them and go through the processes and work with the people that have and are delinquent for some reason, you'll see over time, you again collect almost a hundred percent.
And if I just may briefly, I know we have a, most of the council persons have had our presentation made to them before, but we have a new council person, a council person doing. And just to point out to them exactly how we interface with your property tax collections. Each October, the city levies its taxes. They're delinquent when not paid by the next February. And anything that's delinquent that next July is referred to our firm for collection of those delinquent taxes. So these three pie charts represent the last three July one turnovers that you've referred to us for collection. And the pie chart at the very top, these are the 2022 taxes you turned over to us three months ago. And in just a very short period of time, one-third of those taxes have been collected. The pie charts immediately on the left side, these are what you turned over to us fifteen months ago in 2022, July of '22. And we've collected over seventy-five percent of those taxes. And again, the 2020s turned over to us the year before that, over eighty-five percent. And as Rick was pointing out, there's a lot of numbers that goes into our business and levies and collections and percentages. But we understand, I live in the City of Waco, my family, I raised my sons here. My wife and I have been here for a long time. Rick the same way, he's, I think Rick is original Waco.
Maybe not that old.
But the folks that we see on the street, we see in the grocery store, we see at church, these are the people that we sometimes have to work with to get their taxes collected. And we try to do that in a very meaningful way that you would want us to do so. As Rick was pointing out, most people don't pay their taxes because they're honorary. It's because this is some, something that's blocking them from doing so. And the staff in our office located in central Waco are very good at reaching out to those folks, seeing what the problem is and working through those problems and for the most part gaining voluntary compliance with their taxes. We work very hard with the City of Waco's code enforcement department to find properties that are in need of foreclosure. In other words, these are rundown properties, vacant lots, distressed properties, houses that are in disrepair that are vacant. And we go through the foreclosure process to return those properties to the tax roll and to the public and to the private enterprises that people can use them and put them to valuable use and make them an actual asset on the tax roll and on a delinquent account. And that's how we go about approaching our collections for the City of Waco. Just before I came over here, we were actually in the process of conducting a property tax sale, auction, and stepped at the courthouse today. And it's amazing, we're finding vacant lots, even houses with, properties with distressed properties on them. Improvements are going for extremely large amounts of money. We used to, on a regular basis, deed those to the City of Waco, which had an inventory of these unsold properties. We're no longer able to replenish them because they're being snatched up on the tax roll at the sales. And that's a very positive thing because these people are putting these properties to a very positive use for the city. And how we go about doing that, along those lines, we send out notices to people. We've sent over six thousand notices since we last saw you. We do file lawsuits on accounts that are need of having a foreclosure process done. We recover judgments and sell properties. In addition to doing property tax collections, again, I pointed out, we also interface our work with the municipal lien department of the City of Waco that imposes liens for mowing and demolition and foreclosing sixteen properties, recover over a hundred thousand dollars in liens due the City of Waco. And we also help the city in municipal court collections. And in any type of collections that the city may need, we try to provide a comprehensive collection program. If the city staff in any department has any issue with an unpaid account, they can call us, whether it's a bankruptcy matter or a state court action, and we'll be glad to handle them and assist them in doing so. And in a nutshell, I know you've got plenty to talk about. We'd love to sit and talk to you all about property taxes, but we'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have. And again, we want to thank you so much for allowing us to represent the city and its citizens in these matters.
Any questions?
Holmes here. Rick and Robert, thanks so much for putting this together. This is like the seventh or eighth time I've been through this now. But very complete report, great information, great results every year too. And I appreciate y'all's service to the city. Rick, I take your points. I like the way you said that we're trying to work, if somebody has hit a rough patch, we're there to help them, figure out a way to get their taxes paid. We're not trying to be the knee breaker to get everything collected. So I appreciate that approach. And you guys always have done a great job, and your law firms are both fantastic. And I appreciate all the service you guys have provided for the city. And every year, I also say this, thank you all, Waco citizens, for paying your taxes. Ninety-nine percent, that's fantastic. But thanks, guys.
Yeah, I'll second that, just to say, thank you both for doing what you're doing and the way you're treating people and the fairness of your process and trying to help people pay their taxes and giving them the benefit of the doubt. You're our ambassadors in debt collection, so we appreciate your sensitivity and empathy in that process. So much appreciated.
Thank you.
Every year, I'm struck by the effectiveness and also the thoughtfulness in both of your approach to this. And that's really meaningful to this council, our staff, and our community. So thanks for your good work. Thanks for being here. Really appreciate you guys.
It is an opportunity, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor and Council, our next work session is Work Session nine-one-one. And hopefully, this is not the number Jose is going to be calling quickly. No, this is a discussion of our recommended redesign of the official City of Waco flag. And I want to give a warm welcome to Jose Zuniga, our Marketing and Digital Media Manager. This may be the first time that Jose's presented to council.
It is, it is, guys.
And you know, your first time, this is becoming a theme with me, is we'd just like to throw you in here and give you very little notice. But no, Jose is kind of pinch hitting for Monica, who's fulfilling her civic duty, not voting, rather, serving on a jury, it sounds like. So Jose got told yesterday that he's presenting this, and I know he's going to do great. So just get loose and-
I'm trying. We're really a very friendly group up here.
Time around, not the first time.
So you'll do great, Jose. You've got good news to share, and so you take it away.
So, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me here. As Bradley said, I am Jose Zuniga, the Marketing and Digital Media Manager for the City of Waco Communications and Marketing Department. As you guys are well aware, the city recently updated and adopted new branding guidelines to help define the city's identity. During this process, one of the city symbols reviewed for a potential redesign to incorporate these new standards has been our current city flag. So I am here today to present to you the history of our city flag, the core principles of a good flag design, and a recommendation for the redesign of our official city flag. So we'll start off with a little bit of history covering our current city flag. The current flag was actually designed by Mr. Gwen Stewart, the original department chair of the TSTI Communication, Commercial Arts and Advertising Program. The suspension bridge design seen up here was selected in November of 1985 from hundreds of entries for a flag representing the City of Waco. So in 2015, there was a conversation and discussion on this topic of state flag designs. And it initiated a widespread movement and inspired many governments, many city governments, to take a look at their own flags. Both Utah and Tulsa, which are flags that are on your screen now, along with three hundred other cities, took on these redesigned projects. The new design show a move away from detailed and complex imagery and a display, and display a shift towards the core principles of good design. So I've said core principles a couple of times, so what am I talking about when I talk about core principles? So the North American Vexillological Association, I got that right. Vexillological Association, which is the largest organization in the world devoted to the study of flags, created five basic principles that if followed, should lead to a successful flag design. So let's go through them here. Number one, keep it simple. The flag should be simple enough that a child could draw it from memory. Number two, use meaningful symbolism. The flag's images, shapes, and patterns should relate to what it symbolizes. Number three, use two to three basic colors. Limit the number of colors on the flag to three, which contrast well and come from the standard color set. Number four, no lettering or seals. No writing of any kind should be on a flag or an organization or municipal seal should be on there. The symbols alone should speak for themselves. Number five, be distinctive or be related. So avoid duplicating other flags, but use similarities to show connections. Using the core principles, the Texas flag seen up here is a successful state flag because it's bold simplicity and balance, while the other flag, sorry, Illinois, we're picking on Illinois here, but challenges these principles of a good flag design with its complex and detailed imagery and design. So thinking about this new design, new process, what defines Waco? One of Waco's defining characteristics is its rivers, rivers that flow in and through our city. The Boski and the Brazos Rivers have impacted our economy from the beginning and continue to provide strategic growth opportunities for our future. For our flags to work well, they need symbolism that is simple and bold. Although it is not recommended to have boards on flags, the flying W doesn't register as a letter as much as it does as an iconic mark for all Wacoans to recognize. As for our rivers, we represent those simply, as shown on the screen here, as two solid bars. So I bring to you today, this design is the recommended design for you today as the new official city flag. This flag design references two of the most iconic aspects of the city, the rivers and the flying W, all while integrating into the design the Waco branded blue colors. It is important to remember that you want to be able to recognize your flag and identify it easily. I will look forward to our flag being a widely recognized symbol of our community for all. So what's next? We're not seeking a vote of approval on this design today, but we will bring this item back to you on a future council meeting for an official ask of approval. During this time, we will continue to build a proposed implementation and distribution plan. So upon review and approval, we are ready to fly the flag throughout the city. Thank you for your time and your attention, and now the part that I'm most nervous about. Any questions or comments?
Questions?
I'll just say it's beautiful, I mean, it looks great. I do want to say, I did carry the old flag to the top of Kilimanjaro and to the South Pole and up and down the Mississippi River. So do I have to do those over again?
A hundred percent you do.
That's exactly what that means.
All right. No, this is great, great job.
Thank you, Jose. This is, I'm, I'm, I have been incredibly, incredibly impressed with the work of the Comms Department and all the people who've been involved in this rebranding project. I know several of us on this council have been chomping at the bit for brand identity and really an opportunity to make us choose and decide who we are and how we represent what the City of Waco means visually. And I think this is important, it's well done, it is clear. I know if, you know, if you're a native Texan, you've been drawing the Texas flag all your life and you can do it. And I think that this is one that will be able to be seen in kindergarten classes all around the city. And I like it. I think it's simple, I think it's clean, and I think it's well done.
I like it, I really like it. And I want to thank Josh and Waterwood for bringing it to my attention. We had lunch one day and, and we talked about this flag and what it meant and those, the two rivers and then the flying W, which is, the flying W is, I think, really a beautiful- a beautiful trademark for the city of Waco. And incorporating it in a flag like this with representing also our two rivers, I think it's a beautiful idea. And thank you, Josh, for bringing it to, to me and showing it to me.
I'll just second that. I appreciate Councilmember Bordeiro's proactiveness to engage on this issue, and has been really thoughtful about it. And, and, you know, I loved the, Councilmember Bordeiro, there, excuse me, Jose's explanation of good flag design qualities. I think this is, really embraces that well. And I'm excited about this. And I think we can always keep the previous flag in remembrance. I think, you know, if there's existing cloth flags, like, let's frame them up and-
Mount Kilimanjaro.
Yeah, leave them on Kilimanjaro. But, but yeah, frame them up and put them somewhere that's going to be meaningful and remember those days. But I think this is going to be something that will be really meaningful to our community. Councilmember Bordeiro mentioned to me one time that in Chicago, the flag is really known, and they've, it's everywhere. Like, there's a scene in the attic of the Chicago flag in Home Alone, which is notoriously known, or very well-known to have been in Chicago. And there's a scene of it in that movie. And so my hope is that, you know, teenagers are going to have this in their, in their rooms on the wall, and it'll be something that families will have as well. So really cool to be, get excited about this flag being utilized for our public.
I agree.
Fourth and fifth all of that. I do, to sort of expand on the mayor's comments, I do, and I think this is universally discussed in flag circles, that the Chicago flag is like the gold standard for municipal flags. And that flag makes me think, you know, when I look at what the City of Waco flag could be, would I want to wear it on a shirt? And this flag, if you print it off like 10 shirts right now with this right in the middle of it, I'd wear him 10 days in a row. This is exciting. It's clean. I think it's just beautiful, the contrast of our seal, and the meaning behind the light blue bars with the rivers. And I think it follows, you know, those five central tenets to a T. I'm excited, because just like with the larger rebrand, it is allowing us as a city to take steps forward into what our future is while still honoring our past in a way that the community can get behind. And that's very difficult to do, as evidenced by even your hesitancy in asking us for feedback on this. So I'm glad that we're able to build consensus around this. I think this is a gorgeous design.
Jose, I want to thank you for your work on this. I know you've been a design partner on this flag. And in the conversation, and it's funny, I know this is your first time addressing council, you're doing a great job. And Jose and I, we used to, we work together now at the city. We used to work together when I waited tables and he bussed tables at the Olive Garden 20 years ago, where he met his wife as well. And now our kids have been going to the same daycare and elementary school forever. But it's been fun to have you as a design partner on this. And I've shown this to other, actually, Waco-born graphic designers, and showed them our current flag, and very few have, can even recognize our flag or had seen it before. And so I feel like this will be a source of pride for our community. I think the flying W is an unparalleled success in terms of a design. And I'm hoping that this, enshrining it on our flag, will be a source of pride for our community, so that people will want to hang it in the attic, hang it on their room. You know, and in Chicago, even police officers have their coffins at times draped in the Chicago flag because of their pride in the city. But I'm hopeful for this, and hopefully the community response will be good. And if so, I'd love to move forward. But I wanted to thank Jose, many others who contributed to this, a few faculty and staff at the law school, Connie Nichols, Nick Texera, Jill Spiegel, and others. But thanks again, and looking forward to hopefully some positive community feedback on this.
Thanks, Jose.
Great work.
Good job. One down. All right, our next work session is Work Session 912. And that's a discussion of city projects that are associated with the Foster Pavilion, preliminary event parking and traffic plans. The man that needs no introduction, but probably has a song for us, Assistant City Manager Paul Kane, as well as Deputy Utilities Director Charles Leest, are going to share an update with the council and public, and hopefully alleviate some of the fears and concerns around parking on game day coming up as soon as January 2nd, I believe.
Great. Thank you, Bradley. We were discussing walk-up music earlier, but-
They're playing.
We hadn't settled on anything yet. They are playing next door, so.
So Paul, what would your, what would your walk-up song be, sir? We do need to know this, don't we?
It was the theme to Rocky.
The what?
We were just playing the Rocky theme as we came in.
The Rocky theme, okay.
Something-
I like it. That's a matter of interest, I feel like, walk-up music.
Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak today about where we are in riverfront. Primarily, today we'll be talking about the city's projects, and as those relate to the January 1st deadline date for the opening of Pavilion, the first game will be January 2nd. I am happy to have Charles Leest with me today. He's the Deputy Director of Utilities, as Bradley mentioned. In addition to his duties in that role, he has been the day-to-day project lead on this for a couple of years now. And we just wouldn't be where we are today without his leadership and work on that. So I'm glad to have him here today. He'll be helping with presentation here in a few minutes. And I want to thank him publicly for his work that he's done, and work yet to come. All right. So again, the overview, we'll be focusing primarily on the January 1st timeframe, talking about the city's projects, the garage, the roadway improvements, both at Clay and University Parks, and at the Riverwalk. We'll also cover where we are today on the traffic and parking plans for the first game. This council knows this is a construction site, and it will continue to be after January 1st of 2024. So what you see today may or may not be the final plan. Once all the work is done, we believe it's a great start to get us to that first game. I do have a video that I'd like to share with you. Our comms team did for us, a flyover of the area. Gus, if you can get that started. There it goes. I don't have a narration, so.
Josh, can you say something?
Josh?
This is Riverfront.
So you see the fly along the river there, the garage passing underneath. This site is what will be the Catalyst Phase 4 development. Then you see the Catalyst development that's being completed. This is Webster here, as we fly along University Parks with the river at the right, and we'll fly around and come back in another direction. But I think this shows a pretty good shot of the work that's being done. So this is the Catalyst Garage that I'll be talking about here in a few minutes. This is U-Parks, again, going back towards the freeway, giving you a look at Webster and the work that's been done there, largely completed. U-Park, some sidewalk work already being done here. Again, the Phase 4 site where the Catalyst Garage will be, our parking garage here, the Pavilion, and CRT. This will be the Pavilion Plaza that we'll refer to as well here in a few minutes.
And the skyline did change today. They took the tower crane down, just.
So progress being made as we move forward. This gives you a pretty good view of what's going on. I think this is as of last week or late the week before. But a pretty good shot of the work, and really the transformation of this entire corridor over the last couple of years.
Wow.
And we'll fly right down the river again one more time here, just to give you another shot. Again, a lot of work being done here. The garage, as you can see, completed in terms of the floors. Of course, there's facade work to be done as well. Again, the Catalyst site there, and the Catalyst development further back to the west. So progress being made. All right. Gus, can you get me to the next slide if you can? Thanks, sir. Talking about the city projects, the Pavilion, the garage, Clay, and University Parks. The slides that I'm going to show you here, most of them, I'm showing you these to remind you of how it's going to look when finished. It will not look this way on the first. It will be bare, as some of the pictures you saw earlier, with the parking decks visible. And we'll be completing this work over the January to late June timeframe. But this is the Pavilion Plaza side. This is the Pavilion Garage side, the University Park side, I'm sorry. And this image that you see here is a picture of Emmons Cliff as viewed from Brazos Park East. So that will be a multi-story image of that. We thought that was an iconic image of Waco for that University Park side. And I wanted to show you this as well. These are the images that council helped us select for the Clay Avenue side of the garage that show some historic images of Waco, City Hall, the first fire station, Dr. Pepper delivery van, a couple of pictures of students enrolled at A.J. Moore, and then a downtown shot, and also a shot from Sandtown with a young man rolling a tire along the street there. So these are the images that are truly Waco images, iconic to the area. These, I'll point out that these shots here in 4 and 5 actually sit across from historical marker vignette for A.J. Moore High School that will be on the Clay Avenue side. So as you look at that historical marker, you'll be looking across the street at pictures of the old A.J. Moore students and graduates. So that'll be a neat experience for folks as they come to Waco to have a look at that. And then this is the Pavilion side, as you're walking out of the Pavilion, Baylor University logo here with the, with the bear image. Again, it's ties into that, obviously, the Baylor theme, as you're coming in and out of the Pavilion. So the garage, the status of the garage, we have every belief that it will be parkable, as we're calling it, on January 2nd. One of the issues that we're working through now, we've gone through a couple of different elevator vendors over the last year and a half of a construction. We've had some delays. We hope to have elevators delivered this week, or early next, I believe. And if we can get one of those operational for fire safety purposes, we'll be able to park all 455 spaces. If not, we'll be limited to just four floors or 344 spaces. Facade, as I mentioned, will be July 31st, 2024. And then on the Plaza side, and I'll go back to this image real quick, just as we talk through it, this work here is posters, if you want to call it that, and they're posters that are multi-story tall, of different Baylor images. Baylor is also looking at a video board that will be a very large video board playing into the plaza. They have moved that whole effort up in time now, and they are actually negotiating with AECom, who's the designer of the project, and as well as Austin Commercial, who's a contractor, to start that work now. They are starting that design work. There'll be change orders to both of those contracts, and the city holds those contracts with both AECom and Austin. And we are talking with Baylor. They will be paying that change order for us. And, and there's also be some agreements with regard to the city's use of the video board and other things. So that work is ongoing, but I want to let you know that they moved that project up in time. And then we have issued a RFQ for retail brokers, commercial brokers, on the ground floor. We have about 19,000 feet of retail on the ground floor. That RFQ was issued late October. Responses are due shortly before Thanksgiving. And we hope to have an agreement for council to select and award a contract with that broker shortly after the 1st of the year. So at this point, I will turn it over to Mr. Leest to talk a little bit with you about some of the detailed work that he's been doing over the last year, 18 months, on this project.
Thank you, Paul. Mayor and Council, it's an honor to be here. This has been a fantastic project to work on as a professional engineer. And I'm proud to be a part of it, and I know that it's, it's going to turn out well, and it's going to be a fantastic entrance into downtown Waco. When Paul asked me to come speak, I said, sure, no problem. Glad to cover whatever you want. And he sent me a slide that said the anthill, and I didn't really know how to start with that one. So I'm going to try. When I think of an anthill, I think of a busy task force working through a bunch of tunnels and coming in and out through one entrance exit, and a fury of activity on the surface. And that really does describe what's going on here. We've got millions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars, multiple owners, lots of consultants, design teams, contractors, dozens of subcontractors. We've got Encore, we've got the City of Waco Water Utilities Department, we've got the railroad involved, Tech dot involved, the Corps involved, FEMA involved, and THC. That's the alphabet soup of participants, for sure. When I was first asked to change some of the original project that the city had worked on years ago with Catalyst, I just laid out this simple Microsoft PowerPoint slide here showing the boundaries of all the potentials that could come. And of course, this was the first swag. And then that has subsequently changed probably 15 times in the last two years with the boundaries between the specific projects. What really makes this challenging is just, it is a tight, tight space to have this many projects going on. Furthermore, just the number of, of physical bodies in the room to store everything, and to move vehicles in and out, and keep the public safe, and having a good understanding of how each of these projects are going to tie into each other. You can imagine, you know, the water lines, we've got to fit across each project, and the sidewalks have got to line up, and the tree wells, and where does this person start, where does this person stop? So this, this picture is complicated, and it just scratched the surface of where we got to today. Few photos for you on how Clay is not truly a simple street project. It's only about 700 feet long. But we had a ton of stuff to, to complete in order to allow Clay to be rebuilt. But it was in the middle of everybody's project. And so we need to plan for everybody to be traversing through Clay in order to get the garage built, in order to get the Pavilion access for the materials that they need to bring, in order for Encore to get their infrastructure across the river. And so your first photo here shows the boring rig right in the middle of everybody's yard, right in the middle of the storage materials. Trying to get, the second photo, those lines pulled underneath the river and across the substation. So complicated work, risky work, and working amongst everybody else turned out well. It's in, and we've moved on to the next project. The sewer bypass work was all in anticipation. We had to coordinate, again, right through the middle of the site, to move the 54-inch sanitary sewer that was, was scheduled to go where the Pavilion sits now. We had to move that out into University Parks. It's part of the reason why University Parks has to be rebuilt, just because that was such a large project. A lot of the infrastructure in Clay and around Clay is deep, sewer manhole in the bottom left corner. The materials are river silt and sands, which are difficult to operate in, which really slows down progress. And so guys have worked very hard to get that buried infrastructure in. A lot of times, the conduits, they don't run parallel or off-site to the other contractors, to Austin Commercial working on the Pavilion, or ARO working on the mixed-use facility. These conduits have to serve internal to those lots. And so the planning has to be in place in order for everybody to get the foundations before they start to go vertical. Other things we needed to work on and understand is Clay is one of the largest tunnels. It is the largest tunnel that we have here in, in Waco. It conveys all of Waco Creek, or a portion of Waco Creek, out to the river. It's 25 feet deep, and it's, I think it's 15 by 17. And we had to be protective of that existing infrastructure built in the 60s. We put foundations right next to it with the new parking garage. So you have to understand the, the physics of installing those shafts and getting real close to existing infrastructure, not damage. And then Encore went to the other side of the tunnel and drilled the river right next to it. So all of that planning had to go- of that planning had to go into where everybody's alignment was, and then, of course, on the right photo, working right next to each other, one contractor, next contractor, and so forth. One of the things that we have been very fortunate on is project safety. We've had to provide the fire department access and work really hard to give them what they need and get EMS in and amount, in and out of the project as necessary. And the other thing that really impacted this area here is easements. All of these franchise and utilities need easements. That takes time. It adds to the schedule, and you have to get those all aligned in order so that the project can come together. All right, Clay Avenue itself, a lot of good progress. I expect rain Thursday, Friday this week, so ultimate demolition of the surface will probably be next week, and we'll go right into paving. It is on track for 1-1 of 24. However, although the rain was fantastic to fill up our lake, right now, I need it to hold off so that we can get the paving in. So this is a critical time for us. The other thing would be temperature. Pouring concrete in freezing conditions or working with asphalt in cold weather is going to be a challenge. University Parks, here's a sample of what the entrance into University Parks is going to look like, trees, new walkways, crosswalks, et cetera. And we'll feather right into some of the other photographs and renderings that you've seen that go down, trees on both sides of Clay, both sides of Webster, and both sides of University Parks. This work is progressing. Most of the demolition is complete, or about three-quarters complete on the utility work. And again, we're going to go right into paving as soon as possible, probably the last week of the month. Again, weather-dependent. Asphalt is the selected pavement material for University Parks, and so we will be watching the weather very closely.
All right. Thanks, Charles. Hopefully, council gives you some sense of what it's been like over the last couple of years.
Excuse me, Paul. Could I ask really quickly, what is, what are the minimum temperature requirements for that?
So we like concrete to be 40 and rising.
Yep.
So, you know, we've had a few days already where we've hit some freezing temperatures.
Yeah, a few days last week, for sure. But I'm confident, based on what I've seen for the weather the next few weeks.
I'm glad. I'm glad. We're hopeful as well.
And the last part, on the River Walk, of course, that's going from Webster to Baylor Law. The clomer and the clomer permit and the USAC permits have been submitted. Design is about 50% complete on the construction document or CD phase. We are tracking on budget. Probably the most noteworthy news here is the archaeological studies have been done. It came back clear. That report should go to the Texas Historical Commission. I think it actually was delivered to Texas Historical Commission, and we hope to have a response from them in December. And then, that will allow the Corps of Engineers to resume their work and approve the design. The FEMA work has been essentially approved. They have made comments. We've responded back to them and settled all of those comments. So we're just waiting for formal approval there. The timeline, again, is somewhat dependent, or it is dependent, on the Historical Commission and USAC's review of that. We are still crossing our fingers to bid that work in February, awarded in March, and there's 21 months of construction for the River Walk after that. So looking at everything together, as Charles mentioned, the Encore war has always been the critical path for the public work that's happening there, although we were able to start the garage work, and we had to relocate some power lines in combination with their work. But that was the critical path, certainly, before we could start anything in Clay. So we're still on track to have the garage parkable by January 1st, with it finishing in July. I'm showing Clay and U-Parks here. We are ambitiously hoping that most of the work, including pavement and even some streetscape, could be in by the first. However, we know, we are confident, as subject to weather, that the driveways will be in, and the sidewalks will be in, the streetscape could follow, and that could extend into the spring and summer. But we're looking good there. The River Walk is on schedule, this schedule here, looking at completion in December. And then, of course, the Pavilion, they're going to have it playable by January 1st, and then they also have additional work to do in the Pavilion into the summer. So as we think about six months from now, that entire area will look dramatically different than it looks today, and will be in really great shape for the fall season. The spring season, this, in 2024, winter-spring 2024, is going to be a challenge, and Baylor is certainly aware of that. We're aware of that. But we feel like we're going to be in a good spot, January 1st, to make it happen. So let me talk just a little bit about some of the preliminary plans. Both Baylor and the city have engaged Kimberly Horn to help us with traffic and parking plans. Kimberly Horn has experience in the DFW market with both Dallas Cowboys and Texas Rangers on their facilities. So parking-wise, we are looking at, this graph shows in dark green, or in green, the, what we're calling permitted spaces, and these are for the donors, season ticket holders, the top-level supporters of basketball program at Baylor. And their parking spaces will be in these green spaces that you see here. And we have identified this public parking here around City Hall, and then on-street parking in various areas. So we're looking at about, between almost 1,500 spaces of permitted parking, 836 spaces in public parking lots with on-street parking, up to 600 spaces within what we're calling a 15-minute walk of the Pavilion, which most urban planners will tell you, an interesting walk of 15 minutes is a tolerable walk for people to get to a facility. So we have about 2,800, 2,900 total parking spaces identified to date. You think the Pavilion seating is 7,500 people, figuring two and a half people per vehicle, that's 3,000 spaces preferred to park the facility. We are very close to that today. We are working with Baylor on some additional public parking lots and shuttle service to those lots as necessary. One thing I want to point out here, a couple, you see these blue stars, those are planned to be shuttle pickup and drop-off areas for a different site. So downtown here for the public, we'll have a shuttle that will run to the Pavilion, and then for folks parking at McLean, there'll be a shuttle, much as there are on football game days here to the facility. So ingress, coming to the Pavilion, University Parks in the bottom left, you see this crosshatch area. The plan right now is to close University Parks both ways from Clay to 35. The reason there is, that's an area that will be a lot of congestion if people come in and out, a lot of backup onto the freeway. We need to have an area that's dedicated for shuttles to be able to come to the facility, turn around and go out, and run their routes. So we're going to close Clay from the Frontage Road, or close University Parks from Clay to Furnace Road. Permit holders are going to be directed to come down to MLK, MLK over to Franklin, down, and then University Parks into the facility. So they'll come this route here, and that will allow them to park at the garages. And let me mention this, I skipped over that pretty quickly, sorry. On this one, the Catalyst Garage, which is at the corner of University Parks and Jackson to the Railroad, that garage is finished and complete. You'll recall, council will recall, that there's a plan for another garage here. That garage has been delayed due to a number of different factors, some of which Charles mentioned earlier. So Catalyst is making this garage available to serve as an interim until this garage is finished. So the Catalyst Garage, folks will come down, University Parks, those assigned to this garage will enter here or on Webster. Those assigned to our garage will come here as they ingress into the site. So we're grateful that we were able to make this Catalyst Garage space available. We had planned for 250 spaces in this garage, so we're a little bit of surplus from where we thought we'd be, and we're glad to have that available. So we'll be pushing the traffic along this route. Of course, folks coming into downtown, grabbing some dinner before the game, they'll be able to come in on any of these streets other than U-Parks, Second, Fourth, to access downtown, find parking, get a bite to eat, come over for the game. So we feel like this is a pretty good route, fairly good setup to get folks in and out. And then, as they leave the game, the contra flow really back, or they'll flow back out the way they came. They'll come down to University Parks and go out. The idea, from a traffic perspective, is to get them to Franklin and Washington, and they'll disperse from there. The Pavilion Garage will unload via Clay to U-Parks, and the Catalyst Garage, Webster to U-Parks, and pedestrian traffic here. We expect there'll be folks, the shuttles will be running from City Hall to the Pavilion, and then from the Pavilion to MLK as well, taking folks back to their vehicles. So, and again, of course, the idea of the Pavilion being in downtown is for folks to take advantage of the opportunities they have in downtown to eat before and after the game, have a drink, and just enjoy the downtown environment, and then move on to their vehicles and ultimately on home. So communications-wise, Baylor is certainly leading the communication with their VIPs, donors, and ticket holders. We are working closely with them on the images and what information's going to be provided, marrying one another in terms of opportunities to park in downtown, those kinds of things. So we'll be working together with them on that. The city's communications will target the businesses and residents in University Parks and surrounding areas, certainly the general public, highlighting downtown parking. There will be portable message boards placed throughout the area. We will continue to improve wayfinding signage for folks to find parking in downtown. So we feel pretty good about where we are today. We're going to continue to work on some additional public parking space with Baylor, and hope to have that information for you soon. So that is where we are today with all the projects and planning for the first game on January 2nd. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Paul or Charles?
Holmes here. I'll start out. Man, this is great. There's a sense of immediacy here, a sense of excitement, a sense of anxiety. But I appreciate everybody's can-do attitude about getting this done. So many moving parts on this thing. I was just writing it down in that one slide. Three different owners, four different design teams, three general contractors, a dozen subs, half a dozen outside, third parties, like the railroad, Tech dot, Encore. And not only that, but this has been a very dynamic project. This isn't what we had envisioned seven years ago, when some of us older guys on council were figuring out what this was going to look like. This has changed dramatically almost year to year. So I appreciate staff's effort, Bradley, your team, Paul, Mr. Lees, everybody's work on trying to make this happen with a deadline of, you know, just a little over a month, month away. So this is very exciting. And I appreciate, I think it made sense to bring in a traffic sort of consultant on how to make some of these things work. And I feel good about eventually, it's going to be a different game day experience. I think it's going to be a lot better game day experience for basketball, as they're taking, as folks going to the game, we're taking downtown, restaurants, bars, even the walk. It's going to be a part of the game day, the Baylor game day experience. I think it's going to be superior to what basketball fans are doing now. A couple of quick technical questions on this. The design on the River Walk, that is going to be complete by February? Or you said, it seemed fairly ambitious.
We're 50% with the construction design right now. Some of the other work is really making sure that we get the Corps of Engineers' information nailed down. If they throw any curveballs at us towards the end, we may have to modify some things. But we're at 50% of our construction documents right now, so we're, we think February's going to be a reasonable timeframe to get those CDs, as we call them, finished, and then ready for bid.
Great. Because I think that's another part that I've been touting, too, that River Walk is going to be, you know, the thing that this city has imagined for the last 100 years. We're going to make it, we're going to make it happen here. We're doing it. So yeah, I like that aggressive schedule, because that's March, and then, what, 21 months, the end of December, 2025, it'll be right around the time of the next year's basketball.
Exactly.
One other question I had here, hang on. Oh, the, early in the, in the slides on the video board, that's good. Well, that, that was kind of in our screening. I mean, we had a pretty high cost on the screen there. Will that marginally reduce the cost of our screening, or not enough to make a difference?
No, sir. The screening part, we'll build this part that you see in the top picture, and they will come back with frames that will overlay over the top of these, of our screening with this. And the same thing for the video board.
Okay.
Not knowing exactly the size of these. And this image you see in the bottom here could change. I know that they're looking at raising the video board perhaps and lowering these others.
Okay.
So there's some other things in terms of the placement that could change, but this part, the city will do.
Got it.
What are we going to put up there, Paul?
It will look like this.
Going to have more Baylor stuff on there? More Baylor pictures, I mean? Since the City of Waco Garage, I would think we would have the city.
We are doing, will be the City of Waco. Yes, ma'am. We're doing the City of Waco stuff. Part of our negotiations right now with Baylor are leasing this space to them, and what that compensation package looks like. So we're continuing to have those discussions with Baylor.
As you were going to lease it out, what you just said.
We're working with them now on being compensated for this advertising space, just on the Plaza side. Just on the Plaza side, that's correct.
Thanks, Paul.
You said the change orders were on them, right? I'm sorry. The change orders were on them?
Yes, yes. The change orders to both the design for this work and the actual purchase of the video board.
And just to piggyback on Alice's comment and question there, the historic Waco photos, those are on the other side of this?
Yes, they're on the Clay, on the Clay Avenue side. Yes, on the Clay Avenue side.
I just want to commend both Charles and Paul for their great work. This, the, we're talking about, the anthill itself, I guess, is really, truly going to have generational impact. Pavilion is an aspect of that, but all of the development that's happening down on the river is something the city has so deeply desired for so long. And we're trying to get to this, you know, this one little deadline that we're working on, but the generational impact that this is going to have, the long-term impact of having an activated riverfront is really great, and I'm so excited about it. Okay, a couple of questions I have is, so for the street, what the timeline for University, and y'all might have said this, and I missed it, University Parks from Jackson to Franklin, what is the timeline for that?
I have University Parks the other way.
Yeah, so the, this first phase is Jackson to the interstate, that's 1-1 of 24, and then we would feather in utility work and subsequent paving from Jackson to Washington.
Washington, okay.
Yeah, in the future. And I don't have a schedule on that yet, just because we're trying to get everything wrapped up by 1-1 of 24.
Great. Would traffic be driving on University Parks to get to the garages from Clay to Franklin or Washington?
Yes.
And what will the condition of the roads be then?
So we expect the roads between Franklin and I-35 to be drivable by 1-1 of 24, and also walkable. So we're expecting all of the sidewalks to be there for pedestrians.
Okay.
Pavement complete and.
Paved and complete. Great. Sidewalks, and so I, what I'm throwing off on is, I'm hearing from Jackson, is it from Jackson to Washington sometime in the future? So what's, is it going to be what's there now, or are y'all doing?
It will be similar to what's there now. It'll be new striping, new surface, and some ADA work in the sidewalks.
Got it.
Part of our thought on that section, Mayor, is certainly at the corner of Franklin and U-Parks, with some of the work that's being planned, both in the downtown project as well as the Performing Arts Hall, our thought was, whatever improvements we do there from a streetscape standpoint will likely be redone as that property's developed. And so we're trying to, as Charles said, feather all those things together so that we don't do work that gets torn out as that corner is developed in the future.
That's great.
So in the details, the
So in the details, the sanitary has already been done there. Water is to be done, so we definitely want to get that knocked out before we do any paving whatsoever. And there'll probably be a preservation or an overlay in an effort to make that a nice drivable surface. And then feather into ramps into a new facility or sidewalk, walking into a new facility down the road.
Well, I, I'd love to see the design of that at some point. Like what it's going to be on 1-124, what it's going to look like. And if it is going to be, you know, years and years down the road, like, I don't know, I don't know when we think it's going to get torn up and redone again. I like the thoughtfulness towards that. But short-term or quasi, quasi-short-term, long-term, you know, if it's going to be, if we're waiting to not tear it up because the Performing Arts Center is going to go in, that could be a.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry if I've miscommunicated there, Mayor. The, the work that Charles is talking about, the water and sewer work, I think there's some storm drainage work to do in front of the Hilton as well.
Okay.
That work and, and then the paving after that is on a shorter and more definitive timeframe that we can give you. When I was speaking of what's happening at the corner of Franklin and the redevelopment, potentially performing arts and other development, the streetscape part of the University Parks extension from Jackson or work from Jackson to Washington, we're tentative about the streetscape work because we think it'll all be undone and redone.
Yep.
As those corners develop, the actual roadway surface, the paving, water and sewer underneath, storm underneath, that's on a shorter timeframe and we will work to have a schedule for that that doesn't interfere with the traffic movement on University Parks to and from Pavilion.
That's great. And what I was going to say is if it's going to be, I don't know, five years before, uh, no, no. We'll go ahead.
I was just going to say we're at 60% design right now.
Right, the paving work, I would think it occur within.
The streetscapes in front of like Pavilion Art, if that's going to be like five years out before Performing Arts is done or so, then I just, I would like to know what the design of that streetscape is going to be in the short-term and just explore if there's some short-term things we can do on that. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. From Jackson to the freeway will, will be done by July. From Jackson to Washington is something that we can work on and get that information to council in the future.
So sidewalks and pavement will be done from where to where on January 1st?
Jackson to the, to the 35 Furnace Road.
And then what will, but there won't be, but there will also be sidewalk and pavement from Jackson to Franklin on 1-1, correct?
It'll be what's there now.
What's there now?
Yes, sir. It'll be what's there now.
Okay. And is what, in my head, what's there now is gravel, but underneath that is pavement? Or is that not? It feels like it's really.
Are you talking about the roadway surface?
Yeah.
From Jackson to Franklin's in pretty good shape.
It's an asphalt.
It's an asphalt road.
Yeah.
Great, from Franklin to Jackson, it's asphalt?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and sidewalks.
That's, I follow your logic there. That's open right now, right, from Jackson?
It is open right now.
That's where the detour starts.
It's where the detour starts, got it, got it, got it.
Doing the bore underneath the railroad right now, so it's closed right in front of.
That's great.
Right.
I'd love to, yeah, and if, if we're kind of pausing streetscape on that for the long-term, not the long-term, but the next till downtown, the rest of that area gets developed, I'd just like to kind of look, contemplate what streetscape could be in the meantime.
Sure.
Okay. And I, because I do, I mean, in my head here, the reason I'm asking is I do think being able to walk easily, not feel like you're in a construction site to the extent possible is going to be important for folks. I think it's going to be, I think it'd be important to show that, like have some signage up that says, we talked about that the other day, Paul, but like have some signage that says like, this is where we're going, this is what it's actually going to look like. Because I think there's going to be people that show up and say, why did the city give this much money to this project? If this is what it's going to look like and why did Baylor build this? If this is what it's going to look like, we need to cast a vision that explains where we're, where we're headed. And I do think even communicating from an expectations perspective like we're doing right now so well, that that's where we're going is going to be, be good. I think it's going to be important to engage downtown businesses on this. And we talked about this the other day too, but I think pulling together some community partners, maybe our chambers, maybe City Center Waco to really make sure that on this game day, all of those businesses are to the extent they want to be. If you're in a walkable distance to this first game, then activate up and get your doors open and, and see if there's, you know, a pub crawl or a restaurant walk that we, we want to consider. The, on the permit, so Baylor's going to have a permitted, they're going to permit 1,500 tickets, is that?
That's the current plan, yes, sir.
Got it.
The spaces in green.
Great, great. I think that's all my questions in case downtown businesses. Is, is the, how's the Catalyst project coming, their, their projects?
We are going to have a discussion with council, probably the first meeting in December, about Catalyst and where they are.
Great. That's great. Appreciate you guys, this is really, really exciting stuff. I know y'all are doing a lot of hard work and we wouldn't be here without all of that competent work.
Well, we obviously wouldn't be here without council's vision and support and leadership and commitment to funding and, and just the vision of downtown. And I'm, I'm excited that over the next six months, you're going to see really a transformation there that reflects your vision and leadership on this. So thank you all for, for that. Thank you to the TIF Board and all our other partners who've been engaged with us and certainly to Baylor and their commitment to this side of the freeway and their investment on this side of the freeway as well.
Awesome, thanks.
Thank you all.
All right. Couple more work sessions, but both of them I think will be pretty quick. So we'll get through both, council. Our next one's work session 913, which is a, it'll be the loudest, that's true. Yeah, we'll be yelled at. Yeah, we'll be yelled at. And poor Jonathan Cook, our Director of Parks and Recreation, you're going to give him a complex. No, but it's a discussion of our holiday events and, which are always a lot of fun in downtown Waco. And we want to just give you a chance to update the, the public and the council on what you got planned.
Very good, thank you Bradley and Mayor and Council. I do appreciate the opportunity to speak about a much less complicated presentation here. But you know, I think back, Councilmember Holmes, you mentioned during that presentation, a line about creating spaces so people can create experiences. And ultimately, the development and things that we are building creates that space for our community to come together and that's what the holidays are about. A couple of things we're going to be looking at in our overview here. We're going to give you a preview of what we have planned for our annual Waco Wonderland event in downtown at Heritage Square. And also be looking at our downtown light displays that we will go into effect in a couple of weeks. Also going to discuss highlights of our Wild Lights at Cameron Park Zoo and some neighborhood and community outreach efforts that we have during the holidays. And finally, we're just going to look not only at city-produced events, but give you a little sample of holiday events around Waco. And here, we're going to continue a theme, if I can get some IT with the video.
Cool.
Amazing, my dear.
Well, it's sunny though.
I like it.
All right. So Devin, and I'm not sure if it was playing, but I just have to be a broken record here in the work that our communications team does. Every presentation, the videos they put together with the narration, I mean, they are doing tremendous work and we appreciate it. You call them up and very quickly they turn around quality videos like that. And so very appreciative. But Waco Wonderland, it is a flagship event that we have of a city-produced events by the Parks and Recreation Department that was created 10 years ago in 2013. And at that time, we were trying to think how to activate downtown, how to get people down there. So I'm working with not only our city staff at City Center Waco, the Public Improvement District number one. We got to a point to design a showcase event that would really not only be for our local community, but would also attract people to come down and stay the weekend in the hotels and experience downtown. Over the years, we've seen this festival really be stable and become traditions for a lot of families. I was talking last night and my son started when he was two years old, now he's 12 and every year. So we feel like we've created that tradition. And throughout the weekend on Friday, Saturday and Sunday, we'll see 20,000 to 25,000 people come to enjoy the festivities. A couple of things that we've moved towards last year was our first year to do online ticket sales to eliminate some of those lines. You can buy your wristbands in advance, that proved successful for us in continuing that trend. And it was good to see last year that we saw an increase from our ticket sales, but also on the merchant participation. It was the highest number of food vendors and merchant vendors at our mistletoe market that we had seen. So what can you expect? We have a mix of food, fun and cheer and it'll be December 1st through 3rd at Heritage Square. We will be having our annual tree lighting and fireworks display at 7:00 PM on the Friday night. We'll come back the next morning with some community partners to produce our downtown parade, which will come down Austin Avenue starting at 10 o'clock. As I've mentioned, we do have a full mistletoe market with a variety of local artists and vendors that come out. I believe this year, my favorite part, we'll have 17 different food trucks and food vendors in our food court area that really circle the perimeter of Heritage Square. We'll have a stage every night full of community entertainment, Waco High Jazz Band, a lot of local dance groups just throughout the weekend. There will always be some sort of holiday entertainment. And then we have the Fair's Will to give that bird's eye view of downtown. Also, the Snow Tube Hill will be coming back once again, very popular with the kids. And we'll have a live reindeer. And of course, throughout the weekend, you can come with your family and take free pictures with Santa. We have a Santa house that people can take their picture. Now that's a kickoff and you'll be seeing over the next couple of weeks, it's not just about Heritage Square when we flipped the lights on for the tree, but it's also the lights throughout downtown. So in 2019, before that time, the lights were just focused around the Waco Wonderland event. And thanks to the work of City Center Waco and the PID, they came in and did a full coordinated contract and installation of downtown holiday lights. And this year, we've been working with Miss Africa Tarver to make sure that these are in place. We have lights going in at locations at Heritage Square and the trees, but also we've added in Bridge Street Plaza, trees around City Hall and then on the Convention Center property as well. And we've really been looking at that connection. If we've got lights over on Elm, what are some additional elements that we can add? Maybe that's garlands and bows and I know City Center's been working through that. But then how do you make sort of a seamless walk to where it connects from the Convention Center in Indian Spring to Bridge Street? So that's exciting now that we've gotten that construction cleared out of the way is working on that connection. And you'll be seeing these lights and decorations start popping up in the coming week. Now, another exciting event that has really come to the city of Waco is the Wild Lights at Cameron Park Zoo. And this event started in 2021. It's a ticketed event, a great collaboration between the Zoological Society and the city to really create a magical display of lights throughout the inner loop of the zoo. You go in the nighttime. And I want to say this started with more than 250,000 lights, but this display has grown to now include 3 million lights. Just a baffling number, every year, staff keeps adding into that display. And it's not only trees, it's displays. And it really creates a great atmosphere because you can also go visit with Santa, you can get you some hot cocoa. And this event is open to the public on select nights, starting the day after Thanksgiving, all the way through the new year. Now, a couple of other traditions that have really become mainstays, we light up the neighborhoods as well. It's one thing if you go to the zoo or downtown, but these really stem from the COVID and during the pandemic, we had some great work from our fire department and then our solid waste department of how do we bring the holidays to our neighborhoods? And it's really become cool because as you know, the fire truck completely decked out in lights, solid waste does the Grinchmobiles with bubbles and a sleigh. And these trucks on weeknights and on weekends as well, they start out at Waco Wonderland and from there, they make those visits out to the neighborhoods, to the parks, to libraries and schools. It is really a full calendar of covering every neighborhood and district and something that has really become special. I'm always amazed on social media when we post that, hey, you know, the fire truck will be on display. People, I mean, where are they going to be, what time? And it just becomes, you know, a rolling thread of people trying to catch these and create some real excitement to spread the cheer to the neighborhoods.
Jonathan, are we a little worried that the war of escalation between solid waste and fire with Grinchmobile versus the holiday cheer truck is getting out of control? Or do you think it will be within the bounds of appropriateness?
Well, I tell you, as long as the lights stay lit, I think we're good about it. It'll currently competition, but it is funny. I will mention, I was talking to my team and I had one of the pictures up to begin with. And you know, we have these new templates and I was like, do I need the other picture? I was like, oh yeah, we, we do not want to step on toes. It is both the fire department and solid waste takes good pride in this, so.
They both do an awesome job, they really do.
We also focus during the holidays, multiple departments have a variety of community activities. More of those low keys, but just really the spirit of the holidays and giving. At our community centers, we've started a program called Holidays Around the World that have taken place the last couple of years where you get a passport and learn about the cultures or the traditions of different cultures around the world. We also have community performance groups coming into our community center for performances. And then we host for kids when they're out of school, some holiday camps. And we're excited to be incorporated some more educational components into that, but also once again, teaching our students and kids at the camps about the different traditions that people have for the holidays. Our library also does a great job with a variety of activities. And these range and already on the calendar from ornament decorating, they have story time with Santa and even gift wrapping parties as well is just a variety of program taking place there. And finally, I want to mention our animal shelters. We're working with them on a vaccine and mitral chip clinic coming up. But they're also going to be, that's going to be at Oscar Duconje Park here in the coming weeks. But they're also doing pet food donations this time of year to help out families. We all have additional bills and gifts that we're buying. And so it's very important on that donation process and I will just give a plug, it's never a bad thing to give a gift of an adopted animal. So there is that option as well. I've done that before, the wife might be a little upset at first, but the kids love it, so.
This is some great cross-departmental messaging going on today, man.
We go.
One band, one sound, I like it.
And then finally, we want to close out. We do a lot of work, as you've seen, I've talked about multiple departments and the things that they do for the holidays. And it's a special time, but an overarching theme in Waco, and we've used a calendar we've called December to Remember over the past couple of years. But there are a variety of other community events and this is by no means a comprehensive list because that list can go on and on. But city plays a role in multiple events, the HEB Feast of Sharing is always a great event. The Exrico and the Event Exrico Center is starting a new event, the North Pole Palooza, with an ice skating rink this year. The Farmer's Market has a holiday market planned at Bridge Street Plaza. And then you just have traditional Christmas activities such as the symphonies, Nutcracker Performance or Christmas on Fifth Street or the Maybourn Museum's Christmas lights in the village. There, like I mentioned, a long list of events to where we cooperate and work with everybody to make sure that Waco has a festive feel to the holidays. And we're excited to kick that off with some lights in Waco Wonderland on the 1st of December. And I appreciate the opportunity to talk about the holidays.
Great presentation.
Great presentation. Thanks, Jonathan. I, you know, Wonderland is, is always an awesome event. And as we have enhanced and advanced how we celebrate the holidays throughout the city is just blowing my mind every year. Somebody asked me to go somewhere the first weekend in December, I said, no, I can't, I'm sorry. Wonderland, and they were like, oh, right. But I want to know with the, because Bridge Street is now complete, does that mean that, and that there will be a, the Farmer's Market partnership, Bridge Street will be lit like downtown?
Yes, we do. Part of, and working with this shiraniums company and working with City Center Waco, we did add last year some lights hanging from, I guess, the stage cover. There's also some big trees, like with the globes that we're looking at placement. And so there are some opportunities to now that that is open to really expand that lighting. I know we're also looking at the potential of some light pole decorations going on Elm as well.
Good questions. And it's the best time of the year. It's going to be so fun and all of these things are so excellent. And it's fun to see how they've grown over the years and come to exist over the years. And I, I've heard multiple people comment on how going to Winter Wonderland or going to Cameron Park Zoo or any of these other events. events is done, is so much fun and also so excellent. I mean, excellence really is the word for this. And I just see the commitment to our staff to creating this really great city. It feels like a Hallmark Christmas movie when you're walking around these places.
Which has been on since October, just October 22nd.
Trust me, they're, they're rolling in my house. And so, I, and I'm, and it's not my idea, but that's great.
Mine too, and it's same, same, bro. Same.
But it, again, excellence is the word. And I just can't tell you how much this community is grateful to you and your team. It, it is awesome stuff. And I hope that this is, this is so fun that I hope your team can enjoy it too. I know it's a lot of work, but it's, it's hopefully fun work. And I appreciate you.
Oh, thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tom. All right. Last but not least, work session nine, one, four. Clint Peters bringing us a review of, I think he's just going to cover, planning to cover two public hearings, but with the council member's question, he might cover a third.
Sure. We'll add the third one just for fun. So, we do have seven public hearings. I was going to cover three of them. And then, the other four, be happy to answer any questions you have. The first one is a little unique. We don't see these very often. This is a, an appeal to a denied open air vending permit renewal. This is at the food truck at 38 Parkwood Street, which is Los Trancas Taqueria Number Two. It's been in operation at that site for about 15 years. This is at Boski in Parkwood, right across the street from the, the original Magnolia store there. That helps you with the location. Our open air vending ordinance requires that all property owner, residential property owners within 200 feet sign off every year for the renewal, saying they're okay with the permit. In the past, they have received those signatures. This year, of the four residential properties within 200 feet, they were only able to receive three signatures. Therefore, staff did deny the permit. And then, they're asking for appeal to that requirement to be able to continue operations there.
Clint, do you know if, if that neighbor that didn't want to sign, if he's changed his mind at all, or?
So, and that's, I put the responses we received from the notices we sent out, and the, the property owner that would not sign has provided comments as well. It's the adjacent properties are right, right next to it, and I'll show pictures of it. This is the, and the food truck is actually at a different food truck park operating during this appeal process. But this is pictures of when the food truck was still there. And so, you can see, this is looking from Boski here, and then this is looking from Parkwood. So, the, the owner of this home is the one that would not sign. And their, their, their main objections were noise and trash that have been caused by the, the food truck in their opinion. And so, they had signed in the past, and apparently, it's something that this year just had been so, become so much of an issue, they would not sign the petition.
They're only allowed to stay open from 7:00 in the morning till 7:00 at night? Is that right? Or did they continue?
So, the, the zoning, the property is zoned O3, which has hours of operations limited to 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. They had received a special permit to extend their hours past that. If this renewal, if this appeal is approved by council, they will have to come back through the special permit process if they want to stay open past 7:00 PM. Otherwise, they would be restricted from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
So, Clint, the issue tonight is just allowing him to appeal? Or are we approving the open air?
So, the, yeah. So, the ordinance requires that the property, residential property owner sign saying they're okay with the permit to be issued. They did not receive those, so the permit was denied by staff. And they're, they're appealing that denial. And so, they're requesting, if, so if council approves the appeal, then they'll be able to operate.
Can it be approved with conditions?
Yeah. So, your three options are to approve, disapprove, and then you can approve with conditions.
And Clint, did this go before the plan commission?
No, these do not go through the plan commi, this is, this is strictly a city council public hearing.
Does staff have any, have any recommendations on conditions, or, or any one of these three?
So, I, I, I think, you know, we enforce the ordinance. So, the ordinance required the signatures. They did not get that. That's why we denied it. You know, if you look at their, their opposition letter, it talks about noise. It doesn't reference, you know, in the evening. I would assume if you limited the hours to the day, it probably would negate some of that impact. Again, the zoning only allows 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, but they have operated later. In the past, with the special permit, they'll have to, again, if this is approved, they'll have to come back and request that. So, there'll be a separate public hearing for that. But that, that could be a condition that council might consider as the restricted hours.
But the letter of the ordinance right now is that you have to have everybody within 200 feet and...
Residential property owners.
So, we don't have everybody, so it's...
Yeah. There was four. They got three signatures. They, that fourth one was opposed to it.
And they're, they're right next to it.
And they're the closest property. They're, they share a property line with the...
He's the adjacent, the immediately adjacent.
Yeah.
Imagine how he feels having something like that.
Yeah. Good.
Yeah. Which one is it there?
It's this property right here. So, if you look at this picture here, it's this house, and you can see the food truck up there. So, there's a privacy fence there, but it's really close.
Kind of wish I, I had an idea of if these issues listed by the resident had been remedied since the truck is moved during the appeal, to have like a one versus the other, you know, if it's there, if it's not, if, if that's the true cause of a lot of their concerns or not. Our decision would be approve, deny, or approve with conditions. I think something I would want to recommend as a condition, just from reading the attached letter of opposition, would be that these residents note that they were told signage would be put to not litter and not to harass the dogs and their property, that the Los Trancas would put signage in place to discourage people from doing that. And that has not happened yet. My stance on this would be to approve with the condition that they do that. But open to hearing feedback from, from you guys. I know that truck's been there for, for quite some time, and it seems like three out of the four were actually in pretty strong support of it staying there. And I understand that they're not right next door to it, and you probably have a different experience if you're next door to it, but...
I'm sure.
Well, in line with that, council member, you, what, because it's probably code, were the cleanliness of, like restaurants and things, what has to be maintained around any other restaurants regarding trash and that kind? Is it? I'm asking.
Said differently, like, is, is what you're asking council member, like, if one of the conditions is that it remains clean and trash isn't blowing around, and then trash ends up blowing around next week, the permit can get pulled? Like, is that what you're asking?
Like, is that enforceable by code specifically?
That's what I'm asking. Is it enforceable by code? And if so, how can we show, see, this is the code that we use for this, and this is how this is enforced?
But will it be enforced? That's the thing.
Well, I mean, can it be, is my, I guess, my real question.
Yeah. So, this is an appeal to the denial. So, if the permit, the open air vending permit is issued with conditions, those can be revoked if they're not meeting those conditions. And those, open air vending permits are for a one-year period.
And with the open air vending permits, do, do they come with any sort of requirements in terms of littering or cleanliness around the space?
Just our standard code requirement. So, I mean, that, that would apply to any properties. So, yeah, there, there would be violations there. But if that's something that's put as a specific condition on the permit, that would allow staff to revoke their permit.
Clint, on the revocation process, is that a staff call? Or does, if you want to revoke the permit, does staff bring it to council to revoke the permit? Or can staff do that based on observation?
It would be a, a staff call, and then...
And then prob, and, and I can look it up, but most likely an appeal if the...
They could appeal that revocation to us. Okay.
So, I'm looking at it now. I'm sorry, it's the back of that last page where we see the complaint in. Property, property damage, noise complaints, littering, and animal harassment. So, anytime this, Mr., these neighbors would call you and say they're violating one of these four deals, potentially if we word it that way, if it's subject to, that the permit would be revoked, or the open air permit could possibly be revoked if it violated any one of those.
With proof. That's correct.
Right? With proof.
To be, if they, you know, if we granted a permit with conditions here, and they came back, and staff was like, hey, y'all put these conditions on it, and they didn't abide by it, here's the evidence. That's a pretty strong statement.
To not approve.
Yeah, to not approve at that juncture that, you know, we gave a good faith effort, and staff had strong evidence that they didn't comply with that.
Counsel, I just, I just want to remind you all that we'll be a public hearing this evening regarding this appeal.
That's right. Sorry. Not trying to propose anything. Just workshopping. We're just workshopping.
I think we questioned, sorry.
We had questions to ask. I wanted to ask them.
That's right.
You're not wrong.
All right. And the next public hearing, nine, 22. This is a hearing that was continued from our last meeting on our rezoning on, at 3,000 Robinson Drive from R1B to O3. This is a one-acre property along Robinson Drive, which is a pretty heavily commercial corridor. But there is, on that side, there is four residential uses in that stretch of Robinson Drive near the, the applicant property. Land use designation is medium-density residential office flex, which allows a multiple mix of zoning districts, including the O3, which is proposed. And then, you can see that the yellow where the property is, there's numerous properties right in there that are single-family. And then, you have the commercial zoning along the property. Here's a property looking from the front, and then you can look up and down Robinson Drive. Again, it's, it's dominated by commercial uses, but you do have this little pocket, and there's residential houses on either side of it. Plan Commission did recommend disapproval by a vote of six to one, which does trigger the supermajority requirement for city council to approve this. So, five out of six would have to vote yes to approve this zoning case. And then, the last one that council member Rodriguez mentioned is the 1116, 1122 North Forest Street, or the Forest Guard House, a rezoning from R2 to O3. Their intentions are to restore that house, and the rezoning is part of that. It allows uses that provide, make it more feasible to restore the homes, home inside. It's, it's, it needs some attention. It's fallen, it's fallen into disrepair, and having the, the uses along O3 make it more financially feasible to restore. And so, they are planning on restoring the historic house there.
Do we not have a fund in the Historic Commission for homes like this? Or could we even think about starting something just to save these homes?
So, there's, there's not a fund, but there are incentives. So, this is a locally designated historic home. So, they can get some tax incentives and their permit fees waived. And so, there are some incentives that they can go through when they start the restoration process.
Well, I was talking about the city itself doing something like this. Just food for thought, guys.
I think, I think that's a great, we can make that maybe a good future agenda item is to continue to explore historical preservation of homes in different vehicles to do something like that.
And Plan Commission did recommend approval of this. There was no opposition to it. And they also recommended the other three public hearings tonight as well. And be happy to answer any questions on any of those.
Any questions? Thank you, Clint. Are there requests for any future agenda items?
No, but just because at the end of the meeting, when council gives updates, might be a bit too late to mention this. It is election day, and the polls will be closing right around the time our meeting ends. If you're in this room and you haven't voted yet, do so. Go out of that door and take two lefts. If you're watching online, you can come to the Convention Center and do so, and other locations around town.
Thank you, council member. We will now recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the city secretary at 5:18 PM.
Notice is hereby given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. Personnel, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.074. Nominations and appointment of individuals to the Clinton County Appraisal District, Board of Directors. Rural property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. And economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. We are now in executive session.